Good evening, everyone. Thanks for coming out on a cold and rainy night. I'm going to first go through our procedures this evening and before we get started so everybody's on the same page. So, this is the regularly scheduled January 25th meeting of the Geneva Planning and Zoning Commission. I am Scott Stocking, Chairman of the Commission. Tonight, for the benefit of those audience, I'm joined by Commissioner Anna Miskiel, Commissioner Tim Moran, Commissioner Mike Slifka, Commissioner Mim Evans, Commissioner John Mead, also joined by our City Attorney Scott Fidson, Community Development Director David Group, City Planner Matt Busing, and Assistant Planner Jesse Munsey. Planning and zoning commission's meetings airs live on Geneva Broadcast Network, which can be viewed on Comcast Channel 10, NU-verse Channel 99, MetroNet Channel 93, and City's YouTube channel. This evening, the Commission will host a public hearing for Agenda Item 5A. As Chairman of tonight's meeting, I will guide the public, the applicant, and the Commission through the public hearing process, which is outlined in the back of the meeting agenda. Please see this page for further details. Agenda Item 5A regarding requests from the Bullock campus development will require a public hearing. The Commission will open the public hearing, and the applicant will provide an opening statement and a brief overview of their requests. Commission members will then have the first opportunity to ask questions and make comments. This will be followed by a public comment and testimony regarding the requests. Audience members will be called on in person and given an opportunity to comment. Do we have a sign up sheet in front?
We do have a sign up sheet.
So if you get an opportunity signing the sheet in front as you came in, we'll take that in order, so, for testimony. So if you've already done so or you want to testify, please put your name on the list. Audience members will be called on person and given an opportunity to comment. We ask that you state your name and address. When is your turn to speak? If your comment has already been made and your question has already been asked, it's not necessary to repeat it. Remind members of the public to refrain from bearing off-topic and direct comments that are germane to the requests being considered. When public testimony has ended, the applicant will have the opportunity to answer questions and to respond to any comments made from members of the public. Following the applicant's rebuttal, additional questions or comments may be stated by the Commission, but the public comment will not be reopened. The public hearing will then be closed by the Commission and deliberation on the requests. Any persons speaking during the public hearing agree to understand that everything they say will be considered sworn testimony and affirmed to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. In order to help for the quality of the meeting broadcast, remind all Commissioners to mute themselves except when they are addressing the Commission. Commissioners are also encouraged to state their name prior to speaking on a roll call vote to better assist our record keepers, for example, Stocking, yea, nay, or abstain. Okay? Any questions on that? Please, right forward. All right. With that, Anna, please call the roll.
Mead.
Mead here.
Evans.
Evans here.
Slifka.
Slifka here.
Holloman. Mataskiel.
Mataskiel here.
Moran.
Moran here.
Stocking.
Stocking. All right. Next item on our is, on our agenda is the approval of the agenda for this evening's meeting.
Move to approve the agenda, Slifka.
Mataskiel second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. And next item is approval of the minutes of our January 11th, 2024 meeting. Moran, move to approve.
Stocking, Slifka.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. So we will now move on to the public hearing portion of the meeting. 5A, the Bullock campus. There are five items on their request. The request for, the first is the annexation. The second is a zoning map amendment from RR Rural Residential to I-1 Light Industrial. Three is a preliminary plan unit development, PUD. The fourth is a preliminary and final plat of subdivision. And the fifth one is the final plan unit development and site plan review for Phase One of a 53.78 acre corporate campus for AJ Antunes, I think that's how you pronounce that. Okay? Thank you. And Company, the applicant is Pheasant Trail LLC. The location is generally located southeast of Kirk Road and Division Street intersection, and the pins are 12-01-200-044 and 045. All right. Matt, do you have things for the record?
Yes. So the contents of this file include an application for the annexation, a zoning map amendment, the preliminary and final planned unit development, a preliminary and final plat of subdivision, and site plan review filed by Pheasant Tail LLC dated May 31st, 2022. It includes the following. Bear with me, it's kind of a long list here.
A long list.
We have the project narrative, legal description, proof of ownership, the draft annexation agreement, a response to the zoning map amendment standards, the plat of annexation, list of requested variations, PUD development schedule, site phasing diagram, preliminary PUD plan, the final Phase One PUD plan, preliminary and final plat of subdivision, the site plan, geotechnical report, traffic impact study, land use opinion application, the Kane County road improvement fee application, stormwater permit application, the estimate of probable cost, the preliminary engineering plans, and the Phase One site improvement plans, the electrical service exhibit, right-of-way acquisition exhibit, Division Street continuation exhibit, the endangered species list, the limestone outcrop exhibit, wetland mitigation exhibit, the highway improvement plans for Kirk Road, intersection design study, architectural plans, the master landscape plan and Phase One landscape plan, the tree preservation plan, site lighting and photometric plan, stormwater management report, fire truck turning movement exhibit, and then we also have a copy of a letter from the City of St. Charles dated November 10th, 2023, and a copy of a letter from McNeil Holdings dated December 13th, 2023. We have the list of property owners within 500 feet of the subject property. We have the affidavit attesting to the accuracy of the list of property owners within 500 feet of the subject property, a copy of the letter to all property owners within 500 feet providing notice of the applications being filed, a certificate of publication from the Daily Herald for the legal notice that was published on January 10th, 2024 for tonight's public hearing, a copy of the public hearing notice mailed to all property owners within 500 feet, and finally, a staff report from the Community Development Department to the Planning and Zoning Commission dated January 25th, 2024.
Thank you, Matt. Very impressive. All right. We'll hear from the applicant.
My name is Pat Costello, and I am counsel for the applicant, Pheasant Tail or Bullock Holdings with the Bullock campus. I am pleased tonight that I am here with ownership, management, and our development team to be able to present to the Plan Commission what we really consider to be a wonderful addition to the city of Geneva and the neighborhood on the east side. The plans before you this evening, as Matt stated, will depict proposed development over 54 acres on farmland on the Kirk Road and south of Division Street. The plans will show, and Mr. Heitman, the architect, will get into a little more specifics and show you the images, but it'll show you a four-phase development that is anticipated for this property. Mr. Bullock, seated right behind me, will give you an introduction to the company, to the family business, and to their vision for this campus in Geneva. Phase One, which is being presented to you tonight, will include 131 square foot state-of-the-art manufacturing facility. You will see some of the plans, and Eric will do a nice job pointing that out. They intend to expand manufacturing in Phase Two and possibly add cafe wellness center for their employees on the property where it says retail up there. In addition to Mr. Bullock and Mr. Heitman, we have the rest of the development team, some of whom might be speaking tonight, but if anybody in the Commission has a question, we have people who, from the engineering team, from the construction team, from the traffic study team, from landscaping team, from architect, and from, from ownership. The development team has worked closely over the past 18 months with city staff in creating all these wonderful documents that Matt just listed off, and going back and forth and trying to make sure that we've crossed every T and dotted every I. Bullock Holdings intends to become a neighbor in this community, and the thoughtful design and plans that you're going to see tonight hopefully will integrate this campus into the east side of Kirk Road. Before we get into some more specifics, however, about the plans, I'd like to introduce Mr. Glenn Bullock and have him introduce the company, AJ Antunes, and the vision for the campus. Glenn?
Thank you for allowing us to be here tonight. My name's Glenn Bullock. I'm the CEO and one of the owners of AJ Antunes and Company and of Bullock Holdings. So our, Antunes has been in business since 1955. It's a family-owned company. My father-in-law started it, and we've been developing the manufacturing equipment since then. We're, we have family members here, so I'd like to introduce some of the family members. So we have the fourth generation here, so our granddaughter is Sophia, and then my wife, Jane, and then our daughter, Janice Bullock, or Smidlock. But just a little bit about the history of the company. So we have been manufacturing for almost 70 years now, and we are a global company. We have about 400, 400 team members. When I mention team members, those are employees, so we just call everyone team members. So we have about 400 team members. We have three manufacturing locations right now. We have one in China, and we have one in India, and then our core facility is in Carroll Stream right now, and we're outgrowing that facility, and that's why we need a new campus. So it's always been our vision to have, to create an environment for the community that we're in, and to create a campus for our team members that can help our team members grow and to help them to reach their potential in, in any ways that we can assist them. So as we're building this campus, we, we look at how we can support the team members and how we can support the community around us, and that's always been our vision. So as you'll see with the manufacturing, we're not, we're not just going to be manufacturing, but we have a retreat center, the retail center. We'll have the solar panels, the geothermal heat pumps, and then the school and the daycare center, and an auditorium for not only our team members' use, but also the community around for use as well. So about 35% of our business is international. We manufacture restaurant equipment and automation equipment and water treatment equipment. So anything that's in a restaurant, so toasters, steamers, display cases, water treatment. We do conveyor rice systems for drive-throughs. We do automatic bun feeders. We do gantries for lowering, raising and lowering baskets into deep fryers. So we have a whole array of products that we manufacture, and we're expanding that. We are, some of our customers are, which you're familiar with, McDonald's, Burger King, Sonic, Yum Brands, Pizza Hut, all the different, what we call QSR, quick service restaurants. So we've been selling to them for over 70 years, not over 70, over 60 years, and we've been doing that as a family-owned company. We're planning on remaining a family-owned company. I know there's a lot of companies out there that are selling, and we don't plan on selling. There's a family-owned company. That's why we have fourth generation here, and we, we're planning on expanding and being the community service that we can be for the neighborhoods and creating a campus that people are going to be proud of, so. Okay? All right. Thank you.
Thanks, Glenn.
Thank you. Give me one moment.
Good evening. My name is Eric Heitman. I'm Senior Project Architect at Heitman Architects. We're also a family business, so this has been a really unique, fun project to work with the Bullock family to create the facility for the future generations of Bullocks and their team members. I think what we are going to share with you tonight is, again, I think, a very exciting, innovative campus that first and foremost is going to be a new home for Antunes. Antunes, as Mr. Bullock was stating, they're an amazing company. They do quite a bit of just very innovative manufacturing. They're a completely vertical manufacturing facility, so as an architect going into their existing facility in Carroll Stream, it was impressive, to say the least. It was very inspiring, and I know that this facility will be, you know, take that even further. So the Bullock campus will be generally located on Kirk Road and Division Street, adjacent to the East Side Sports Complex and neighboring new industrial development to the east. It also borders residential, and I think that this project is a really great, I guess, intermediary between those uses. We are creating a project that is going to bring the community into and be part of the Antunes team by creating uses in addition to the manufacturing facility. So as you can see, we're also in close proximity to DuPage Airport, and here is our site. North is now oriented to the left. You can kind of see as we zoom in, and here you'll see a rendering. We'll move into an animation so it'll give you a sense of kind of the project and how the phases will work. I can kind of start that here. So as we kind of fly in to the campus, you see this is set up showing what Phase One, the Phase One manufacturing facility. Given that this, that Antunes manufactures kitchen equipment, a kitchen showroom will be part of the first phase. You see that in the bottom-left corner. Here you see is now transition to Phase Two. This is bringing on the retail building. Phase Three brings on a retreat, and then as Phase Four brings on what would be an education facility and an auditorium. Here, we'll just continue to kind of fly through. You'll see that while this doesn't show all of the landscaping and the extensive landscaping of the project, but it does show the water. Stormwater management onsite is going to be a very important part of the story. So one of the things I was really impressed that Antunes does is water filtration for their restaurants. So the story of water is going to be an important part of the project. Also, wellness for their team members and the community is an integral part of what we're doing, and so you'll see that there are sidewalks, you know, walking paths, which is really, you know, meant to navigate through the campus, be part of the landscape, and an opportunity for their employees to, to get out. As you, you see as we're kind of coming, approaching the building, the large glass facade is going to be their patio and cafe space. Again, because the, you know, the nature of what they do, this idea of having a very great communal dining facility will be part of that. Also overlooks from the second floor, there'll be private dining rooms for the family and for their guests. So that I will, here you can see the, the phasing plan that's included in the, in the architectural drawings. It's part of our submittal. Here you see across, across the very top of the page, the Phase One manufacturing in white. Flanking it north and south are the Phase Two manufacturing and their headquarters building. At this time, we're currently thinking that the Phase Two will also be the construction of retail facility. The idea of the retail would be a multi-tenant, retail means they have currently, their Carroll Stream facilities, they have onsite wellness facilities for their employees, so that will be part of this retail building. The, the, sorry, the clinic, there'll be a clinic is, and then that will be open to the, to the public as well. We're talking about a food court with restaurants, outdoor amenities like, we're showing bocce ball and sand volleyball. So really, the idea is like create a, a place that the community wants to come to as much as the employees want to, 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 to go to. In yellow, you see Phase Four, the auditorium and the school. I passed over Phase Three, the retreat. So the retreat, given that, that they're an international company and they're, they're welcoming their customers from all over the world, the retreat is there for their guests to come and stay, a little more casual environment outside of the, the headquarters. And so here is just an enlarged view of the 3D of the plan, the bird's eye view. Here you can see, in addition to the, the, all of the stormwater, the, the ponds, you also see rooftop solar panels. So sustainability is very core value to Antunes, and it will be a very important at Bullock Campus. And so we're showing rooftop solar panels. We're also showing a rooftop greenhouse. Again, because Antunes is in the business of food, what a better way to bring food onto the campus, but actually grow food that, that might be served in the employee cafe, you know, or even the, the retail center. Again, so the story of water will be told, so you can see, not only do we have the, the ponds, but also we are introducing bio swales in the parking lots, so the idea is that all of the runoff from the parking lots would be filtered through the bio swales. Again, you're seeing Phase One, followed by Phase Two, Phase Three, Phase Four, and this kind of speaks to the uses, so. Again, Phase One will be the manufacturing facility, which will bring online the cafe and the showcase kitchen. I want to share with you the elevations for Phase One. So here you can see, I think, is a very handsome building with a lot of glass, so the idea that we're bringing a lot of daylight, again, you know, really promoting the idea of wellness for their employees. You have the showcase kitchen will also have, you know, continuous ribbon window that'll allow a lot of natural light. You also see that the manufacturing facility, which is on the right, will have clear-story windows. Again, not just daylighting the office and showcase kitchen café environment, but we want to bring daylight into the manufacturing floor. So here you can see that. Terms of materiality, the, the patio and showcase kitchen will sit on a plinth that is stacked limestone retaining wall. The, the building will predominantly be insulated precast concrete panels, but we'll have a lot of, we'll introduce a lot of glass into the, into the project. A lot of the, the kitchen equipment that Antunes is manufacturing is stainless steel, and so we want to introduce stainless steel as a, as a finish material in the building. So the, the arced facade of the showcase kitchen would be stainless steel metal panels, and on top of, of that will be a green roof, so we'll have a vegetated roof on top of that kitchen. Moving to the north facade, so this is an expansion wall, so in the second phase, the office will be built in front of this elevation. There's extensive glass into the manufacturing floor, because when that second phase is constructed, we want to be able to see all the cool things that are happening in the factory floor. So there'll be a very strong visual connection between the office environment and the manufacturing environment. So everybody feels like a team working together. Here you can see, again, the use of precast concrete. We have storefront glazing, stainless steel on the showcase kitchen. The east elevation, this is where the docks will be located, and so here you see, in this first phase, four docks, two drive-in doors, and again, we're introducing clear-story glazing. Also, the oasis. You might ask, what is an oasis? We've recently completed a project in Joliet where, where like Antunes, it was very important to create a very comfortable, inviting workplace for the employees in the factory. The idea of the oasis is a place where those factory employees can take their break with, you know, lots, a, a strong connection to the outdoors, so a lot of, a lot of daylight. This, I did not mention this when we watched the video, but it is on axis with the employee entrance, so not only do you, at each of those moments, introduce a lot of daylight, but you actually see through the building. So there's a lot of transparency in those moments. Here, speaking through the, the materials again. And then the south elevation, again, this is an expansion wall, so when Phase Two and Phase Three manufacturing are brought online, this will be absorbed by the building. Again, we're introducing color. We see the building as an opportunity to bring, to, to make the brand part of the building as well, so we're introducing branded Antunes colors in the clear-story ribbons, so we're introducing that blue color. Warm grays as well, and white. And here you go, again, precast glazing. But there's a lot of exciting things happening after Phase One, and so we'll go through a series of renderings, and we can talk about that as well. Here you see, you've seen this kind of before, the bird's eye view, only in a kind of softer rendering. You can really kind of get a sense of the retail facility here. Again, there'll be a clinic, there'll be a small, like sundry shop, restaurant, and, indoor and outdoor dining. The school, which is located in the, in the bottom-right corner, has not been designed yet, but we've had a lot of really interesting conversations about what that will be, and I think what, what, what is known about it, it will be very tied to the campus, to the nature, like teaching in a natural setting and learning from, from nature. Also, the auditorium and retreat center, not developed, but they're set in the campus, so you have, you know, you'll have views of the ponds. We have an island that's set up and connected to the school, so that island and that pond will be a, a teaching, an outdoor teaching environment. Similarly, you can, in here, you can see the extensive trails that are established through the building. Also worth noting that part of that is a connection to, to the East Side Sports Complex. So we really, you know, want this to be a welcome environment for the community, and those are some of the kind of ways that we've approached that. Here you can see what the Phase Two, the office, the headquarters will be. We're introducing more stone on the, on the, on the headquarters building. You can, from here, you can see the green roof that would be atop the showcase kitchen, and, and also, you know, more use of stainless steel to speak to the products that Antunes manufactures. We'll also have a prominent flag display, so one of the things that's, if you go by their Carroll Stream facility, you see the flags flying for all the, the countries where they're, where they're, they're working and selling their products. So here you can see is the approach to the office, those flags, kind of waving, the pond, the stacked limestone retaining wall, and again, you know, the office will have extensive glazing. And again, you know, the office will have extensive glazing. Another view from across the pond, here you see the, the showcase kitchen, kind of front of house. Also, the greenhouse sits above the cafe, so that rooftop greenhouse would be accessible from the second floor of the, the cafe space. There would also be a, a, a small addition on the east elevation that would be for shipping and receiving to access the rooftop. And here you can see the phase two retail center, also using that same stacked limestone, so the buildings, the material, materiality speaks to each other. The idea that these outdoor environment will be a lot of opportunities for, for play. So we've got the work and play covered on this facility. Another view, as we kind of turn the corner. So there will be a, a kind of a front porch to this building that will have covered outdoor dining, indoor dining that can open up. Bocce courts are shown here. And that's, didn't realize I was coming in then, but that's it. So I'll take my seat and try to get this other.
With, with that presentation, we are interested in hearing your questions or comments from any of the commissioners at this point.
All right, thank you. John, you want to start us out?
All right, thank you. Thank you for the.
Just turn your mic on.
Sorry.
Thank you for the presentation and your deliberate and thorough approach to this development, and it also goes to city staff as well. I'm curious, these are some comments from reading the package. Is, is it to, am I to assume that the primary truck access is coming via Geneva Drive and Couts Road to the limited access north-south road on the east side of the property?
Jason?
Sure. Please introduce yourself for the record.
Yeah, Jason Sobolski with Jacob &amp; Heffernan Associates, the civil engineer. That's correct, so the, the traffic flow will come from both, it will come from both through Couts via the back road there through Geneva Drive.
Right.
Where there's currently a, a dead end turnaround there for traffic that gets stuck down there. And then there will be some trucks that will come off of Kirk Road through the division access. The plan's been reiterated and changed a few times, so that there's no longer a proposed connection. You can see here at Geneva and Kirk, Geneva Drive and Kirk, that's now been turned into a cul-de-sac to eliminate any kind of connection with that. So our current, our current two access points, which would be open to trucks and cars, are through Division and Kirk and through Geneva Drive and our backend, we're at that end.
When I read in the packet that, that easternmost north-south road was a gated road with, with access for trucks primarily from Couts and Geneva, I was assuming that there would be some limitation or ability to limit, limit truck access from Division.
Yes, and the, the idea to limit it from Division would just be limited to internal trucks, to make sure that that drive in the back there is not being used for a private connection for the, for trucks to make, for the trucks east of this campus to make a connection.
Right.
So that'd just be for personal trucks.
Understood.
Yeah.
So you expect the bulk of any deliveries or trucks leaving the site to be, to, to exit via Geneva Drive?
That would be the easiest.
Minimizing impact on Kirk Road.
Yeah, and, and understand that Couts Road is master plan to be a more heavily truck thoroughfare through the cities and through intergovernmental agreements.
Okay.
Yeah.
Other, other questions I had, this, it appears as though, I appreciate the, the attention to detail and the use of water features. There will still be a connection from the stormwater retention ponds to the city's stormwater, storm system, correct? You might as well stay up for a little bit.
Probably going to be engineering questions.
I'll take all the civil questions. Yes, so this development, most the, again, to reiterate, the, the high point pretty much of the county is actually Kirk Road here.
Okay.
So most of the, I'll say half of the site, let's, more or less, will drain towards the east, which is city of Geneva. But the ponds up in the north near the retreat center will go north, which is technically St. Charles.
Right.
So we're matching now with this design, the existing drainage patterns. Most of it would go to city storm sewer, half of it, I would say, goes to city storm sewer.
Okay, so all the ponds will be wet, and then there'll be any, there'll get to a, there'll be a leveling device, or any excess will go out into the city's.
Correct, yeah. What, if, if, you know, the, the, the large 500-year storm event flows, all this will flow towards the east, towards the existing industrial development. It won't flow back towards the neighbors to.
Okay. Can you explain, while you're up here? The expected upgrades to the Division and Kirk intersection?
Absolutely. So right now, Division and Kirk is currently a three-legged intersection there, so this development would complete that fourth leg intersection, putting a light to, to make this a four-legged intersection. And currently, there are, the turn left turn lane in, so the, heading into this development is there, the room's been already there, so there's no need to widen Kirk Road, but we have to make some modifications to that, making that turn lane in there, as well as making a right turn lane in. But overall, that's, it's, so it's, it's a few access points, but there's no real widening or any kind of large improvements to Kirk Road.
Okay. So, so I see most of the truck traffic's coming from the east, most of the employees will be coming from Kirk, I, I suspect. There's an excess of 485 parking spaces, is, what does that do to overcode? I'm just curious, is it the number of shifts, the number of employees, the fact that you're inviting the public in to use some of the amenities? Maybe you could talk to that.
You want me to? You want to handle that one?
So, I mean, the.
Sir, if you would stand up, please, so that people online are listening, so.
Glenn Bollock. You know, once we complete the, you know, this is, this isn't a one-year project, this is over, this is over a 10-year span, so our goal is, is, is when we completely shut down our facility in Carol Stream, that we're at another 300,000 square feet of manufacturing on, which, you know, will be around anywhere from 1,000 to 1,500 team members.
Okay.
So the excess. And then with the auditorium, I mean, we're hoping that it'll be used for plays, for whatever comes into, comes into that facility. And then the retreat center, our goal is, yeah, if, if it can be used for family reunions or whatever. And then the retail center, we're not sure how many people that'll bring in as well, so, but it will be a community.
And I recognize that you've got different components, and so to have parking fields proximate to those components is important, so that drives some of the excess. Any thought, or is there any permeable paving being employed, just to?
Yeah, I'll jump in on that one. Permeable pavers is my fun question. So permeable pavers are being, instead of, rather than using those, which tend to be maintenance nightmares, have a lot of issues with them, we're entered in, introducing the bio swales in between hand. So if you can, you can kind of see it, if you, if you look in there in the parking field near the manufacturing, there's large green strip, so your parking stalls aren't back-to-back, there's a 10-foot wide green strip.
Okay.
That all the water's going to drain towards and be infiltrated with engineered media soil and everything like that. So that's being used in lieu of a paver system. It's still a BMP, but just one that is technically more efficient and much more efficient to maintain.
So that, that employing that partly drives your request for a variance on the, on the lengths or, of the parking stalls?
Correct, that, because it reduces the parking stalls, exactly. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I think that's all I have for now, thank you.
So since this is currently planted over, say, eight to 10 years to develop, could you just talk a little bit more in detail about how the balance of the site, the future phases, will be during phase one? In terms of, that can, you know, how they'll be, how they'll be left, how much will be landscaped, things like that?
Yeah, no, that's, that's a great question. So all the ponds will be built during phase one, that, that's one thing, I think they were showing in those exhibits really well. The pond, the infrastructure will be built during phase one. The rest, everything that's not the retail area, the school area, the auditorium area, would be green space that is restored, so there'll be mass grading in those areas. The engineer plans kind of show that, the contours over there, the mass grading of it, but it'll be restored to natural seed material in the interim while it's being constructed, while knocking it down. So it won't be left exposed soil, it can't be left exposed soil, it will be seeded and maintained, so.
And the landscaping too, I mean, the trees that were planted on, planted during phase one.
Exactly, the trees are a heavy part of the phase one with the, especially with the parkway trees, those are the large portion of the trees being planted, yeah.
So there will be some landscaping in those areas to help stabilize and, and make them a pleasant visually?
Yes, exactly, yes, exactly.
Thanks, thank you.
Tim?
Again, thank you for this wonderful presentation. Couple of questions. I, I see, as Commissioner Meade pointed out, a lot of parking. I don't see any truck parking. Am I to infer from that, that trailers drop their loads and leave, there won't be any overnight truck parking?
Sir?
Can you tell me about your, your truck usage now?
So currently, Glenn Bollock, currently, our truck traffic is about 20 trucks a day, 10 trucks in the morning and 10 trucks at night. We have one truck, right, one trailer that sits in one of the docks for scrap metal. So we're, and that gets pulled out, oh gosh, probably once a week. So after we fill it up with scrap, then they come and take it away, but there isn't any overnight trucking. Most of our trucks in the morning are deliveries, and all the shipments are shipped out in the afternoon, so there won't be any overnight parking.
I also take from that, that the manufacturing operation is basically business hours, this isn't a 24-hour proposal manufacturing plant?
No, we, we run three shifts. So we're three shifts right now. Right now, we're running four 10s, so we start on Monday mornings, and then we go to Saturday afternoons. So it's not quite, but here again, we're pretty flexible, and we do, when we get larger orders, we'll work 24/7. So, but it's, right now, we're three shifts, three shifts of 10 hours, that overlap, obviously.
Thank you, that's all I had for now, thank you. Ben?
Thank you again, also, for your excellent package and presentation, and most of my questions have been answered, but I have just a few stragglers left I'd like to ask. One is, could you address the tree preservation a little bit? I was surprised more couldn't be retained, since they seem to be located around the edges.
I'm Doug Shannon with Gary R. Weber Associates, we're the landscape architect on the project. Do we have the tree preservation plan?
If you slide over there.
Yeah, if you go to the, if you see the Bullock Campus.
We'll pack it up top.
Yeah, do a control.
I'm on top, I'm on top.
I don't see it.
It might be in the drawer.
Oh, there we go. Oh, there it is. So an extensive tree inventory and survey was conducted of the site. And as you go through and look at our tree preservation plan, we've taken every effort that we can to preserve all the trees that are possible on the site. Any trees that are diseased or damaged, or would pose a risk to any users or visitors of the site, those are proposed to be removed. As well, we have provided replacement trees per the city's requirements, based upon the quality of those existing trees that we do have to remove.
I would just comment too, from their.
Yes, so this plan here highlights the different requirements that we're meeting with the landscape plan. You can see we are providing an extensive amount of shade trees, ornamental trees, and evergreen trees around the perimeter of the site to screen it and provide a beautiful perimeter to the adjacent residents and neighbors.
Okay, I guess I was just surprised that particularly along that north boundary, it seemed like there were a lot of trees there, and they were, you were replacing them rather than keeping what you had, like there was a lot of.
Yeah, I'll chime in a little bit too, just because it kind of correlates with the civil plans. The, the issue is that, and we've been working with the city arborists and everything, to determine that the trees that will be saved during construction, if you're, if you change the grade a certain amount, which is a few inches underneath the drip line of the trees, so not just around the tree, but the drip line, it could cause the roots to kill the trees and die, it may take a few years. So we've been working with saying, hey, we're grading right up near the property line, as you can see with that pond on that, that north side and even the south side there. So any kind of grading that's in that drip line zone, we've, we've extensively looked at that drip line zone, but that, it's not just up to the trees, it's out towards the drip line zone. Those trees would be most likely damaged during the construction and the regrading operations. So right now, we're accounting for those losses, rather than potentially three years if they were to die in the future when their roots get destroyed. So I think that was kind of the question you were asking.
Right, thank you.
You see them right on the property line, but during the, due to the grading, they would be destroyed.
Okay. Did I understand there will be a light at Geneva Drive also, or no?
No, there is no, there is no connection to Geneva Drive, there's no light at Geneva Drive, it's not being applied for with, with the county, with the OT anymore, so.
And can you just talk a little bit, you talked a lot about how the community can, is invited onto the site, which is wonderful, and we've got a large residential population right proximate to the site. Can you talk a little bit about how all those residents would get across Kirk Road to, is there any kind of modification to allow them to cross without having to get in their cars and drive over there? If they want to ride bikes or whatever?
Yes, no, that's actually a great question, as being one of those neighbors myself, so. Currently, at, at Geneva Drive, so there is no crossing there or anything, and it's, it's designed to be that way for safety purposes, especially it not being signalized. There will be sidewalks provided at Division there that will connect into the current sidewalks that are out there right now, so they will have access, they do have the, the walking signals and everything, so the, the pedestrian access would be through the Division, Division and Kirk access is where it would come from, nothing from Geneva Drive.
Okay, so there'll be a signal, the signalized crosswalk will be, will be there, so they go up and.
Jason, what about the Prairie, Prairie path?
Yes, and, and right, that's a great point, too. So that Prairie path is right now where the Division Street is being shown right there, so it's being relocated, revamped and everything as part of it. So north of, it's actually where those trees are on the far left side of this diagram, is the new Prairie path that will connect all the way to the east there and to that east side drive complex. So they could come through, if they're coming through the east side drive complex, you can come that way as well, into the, into the park, so.
And then the site, the campus is all, appears to be pretty much oriented internally. The fronts of buildings are on the inside, not facing towards Kirk or Division. What will this, this streetscape look like as far as those buildings that are along Kirk there?
As far as the cafe wellness and theater areas and all that kind of stuff?
Right, right, because are we, are we going to see the backsides of those buildings, or what will that look like?
Yeah, I know, again, Eric Heitman with Heitman Architects. So what we've done is, is really tried to look at these buildings like holistically, like that there's not going to be a, a backside to the building. We do acknowledge that, you know, this campus will have a lot of exposure to Kirk Road and Division. So we have worked closely with our electrical engineer to ensure that we're locating transformers in a way that's going to be less visible from those major corridors, and the theater and school are not designed, but as of right now, but they certainly would, would be facing the street internally and externally. I could, if, if you would allow me, to go back, I think we have a rendering that shows that.
Retail center.
The retail center, correct? The retail center, correct? So bear with me here. My apologies, I'm... Yeah, it's...
Frozen.
All right. We could use the other one, sure. Let's try this one more time. I want to give it one more time.
There we go.
Phew, all right. I can't get my cursor to that side of the screen. Thank you. All right. Maybe not. Yeah. Here we are, okay. So, yeah, so here you can see, this side would be, this is facing the Antunes headquarters. As you kind of walk around the building, you see the front porch, which would face the internal parking. Well, maybe I stand corrected. We had a rendering of that, I apologize. We could, all right, well, let's just do that then. Apologies. Okay. Let's see. Here you can see, this, these renderings begin to turn the corner facing Kirk Road. So here you see the glass that's part of this mass that faces Kirk Road. This has the fitness center. Yeah, here. Right. So here you see, you can actually see the, the exercise equipment. This would be the front porch, which is the dining for the residential. Here you see, this would be the north facade looking south. So this is kind of, if there were a backside, this is, this is really the backside facing north, but what we've tried to do is... Yeah. So again, because Antunes is making restaurant equipment, they make some really innovative drive-up delivery systems for their restaurants. Excuse me. So you'll actually see that. It will be, you know, as much a part of the display as it, so we, we want to show that off. So we can't have this back facade be... Yeah, it's a double drive-through. So I'm not sure, hopefully this kind of gives you a sense of, that we've, we've tried not to, to forget an elevation on the building.
So something like this restaurant section, and the public is invited to be...
They will be open to the public, correct?
Yeah. So what about signage and how you direct customers from Kirk Road to this?
So that, that's, that's actually a great question. We have not delved into signage, but we would, you know, I would assume a monument sign. Oh, well, there...
We do have signs.
Not, yeah, sorry. There will be signage on the buildings themselves.
The goal is to have a marquee, so to speak, coming on and pointing Division and Kirk.
This is maybe very hard to read, but you can kind of see there is a... Yeah. Just kind of a suggestion of wall-mounted signage that would be part of the building. So again, this is kind of facing the headquarters. The, the front porch with the fitness center fronting the, you can see the outdoor dining. Here you can see the north elevation, the idea that the, there would be a grocery, a grocery that would be signed on the building. Here you can see that the, the backside of the restaurant block, you would, is going to have the kitchens and the, so we have daylight through clear story windows into those, that retail block. These clear story windows would look into the dining hall.
There's never a west.
So, let's see. Sorry.
It's not really a west-side elevation then?
Yeah, so here, sorry, at the very top, we have...
At the top?
So here you see...
Yes, yes.
You'll have the shed roof over the dining facility be a very dynamic kind of form that we've talked about having photovoltaic panels. There'll be a fireplace, so that'll be kind of a vertical element. Canopies on both the north and south elevations.
Do you envision, and maybe you mentioned this, say at the main entry to the campus, would there be signage that would direct people to all of the different uses on the campus?
We'll have to have directional signage, like directional plinths that will...
Yeah, the goal would be, I think, they go on campus and then the different aspects of what's on the campus will be part of that.
Okay, so if someone was trying to find the fitness center or whatever, they would be signed there?
Yeah, we're planning on having nice, I call it a marquee, monument, right, as you enter off Kirk Road on Division.
All right. Thank you. That's all I have.
Yes, John?
Just to follow up on Commissioner Evans' questions. For the retail building, do you envision that, like for the restaurant, the cafe, you're trying to hide, showcase your delivery systems and the food to folks? Is that going to be operated by you, or is there potential?
Oh, sorry, sir. If you just, I'm sorry. I always forget. Yeah.
Yeah, so the, the goal would be, would have, be three independent, we're thinking of three, it's like a food court, that would be tenants to, to the building.
John?
Do you have that arrangement at your current campus?
No, we don't.
All right.
The only thing we have at our current campus is that we have a fitness center on our current campus, and we have advocate clinic.
Okay.
That our team members utilize. So, and it's a pharmacy as well, so.
All right, thank you.
Adam?
Thanks again for all your time and effort in these, in the campus. Couple of questions I have. Are you intending on developing the retail yourself, or is it the intention to sell it off to a developer who then would, would build it out for the tenants?
The thought is that we would construct the building and then lease it, lease the different portions out.
Okay. And it sounds like you've had some interest in some of the, the uses?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Excellent. See, what's the total staff headcount for all three shifts? What would you say?
It's around 400.
400, okay.
But 350 to 400 right now. It depends on how many temporaries we have in.
Okay. As far as the noise level, I know your manufacturing is pretty sophisticated. I wasn't sure if there was any, like, stamping onsite or any, some loud type of work being done there?
No, we, we don't have any type of punch presses or, we have lasers.
Yeah.
Panel benders. We do welding. So there isn't, I mean, when you walk through our facility, we don't require any type of ear protection at all. So it's, it's pretty quiet. I don't know what the decibel level is, but we have, every year, we have OSHA come in and review our, our safety in our building, so.
As far as the trucks coming in and out, you don't have any reefers that are needed to, you don't have any refrigerated trailers that are coming in and out?
No.
No?
No.
That's all I got. Thank you very much for your time.
Okay. Anybody else? Any other comments? All right. Very good. So I need the...
I think a lot of people who sign on the sheet are here with us.
You guys in the front, the first, first couple of room? Okay, I'll look for like what I think are Geneva addresses. Start that way. Okay, so yeah, the first one I think is Mary Tripp, 438 Division Street?
Good evening. I'm actually Mary Tripp, but I'm actually the Weber Farm that is the small remaining five-acre parcel on Couts Road.
Oh.
My only concern this evening is, is one, and it's purely isolated to myself, and two, our, what is left of our family farm. On page five of 13, we, we talk about the street network and traffic. And when I reviewed the plans, which are a little bit hard to see on the computer, I, I saw how they had changed division somewhat, but I did see how it just was isolated to the Bullock Campus, which is a fabulous project. It's absolutely beautiful. I like everything about it. And I was glad to see that Division was not, at this time, proposed to go all the way through. But the comment on page five in that section said, well, if Division Street was ever extended, and Geneva does have the right-of-way granted by Hillwood to whom we sold our farm to, they have 80 feet, and it comes right down to the, within 10 feet of the last building on the farm. So basically, if Division Street ever did go through, it would pretty much eliminate or, or kill what's left of that 150-year-old farm. So I'm only saying this on behalf of myself. We have a beautiful berm covered with pine trees and all kinds of beautiful plantings from Hillwood where our farm, our little five acres, is still standing. Running Division all the way down to Couts. Honestly, I cannot think that it would be helpful to the neighborhood, to my, to my neighbor to the north who has a little farm, or to the traffic that would then come peeling off of Couts and running through this development. So that is my only, my only concern. And I would ask you that in the future, if you do consider further development of Division, that you just take into consideration that what we have left there is over 150 years old. I have limestone, too. Our barn is a limestone base. Our house is a limestone base. Our bricks are from Galena. And that is a, a four-generation farm. And I was born five years before the company started. So I thank you very much. I think it's a wonderful project and it's, you've been very thorough as you were with the Hillwood development. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, the next person is Carl Peterson. It's you? Okay. Doug Shannon, I think it is. It's yours, same.
Going as the applicant.
That's applicant. I don't see any Geneva addresses. So I don't see any Geneva addresses on this list, so I will, yes, I'll just take people who want to come and speak. Rather than call five people that don't want to, have already testified. Yes.
Thank you very much, John Dashner, 7...
Hang on a second.
Did anybody need to be sworn in for this hearing?
We can swear everybody in if you want.
I just didn't know, because we usually do.
We kind of did that at the beginning.
The opening statement.
We kind of did that at the beginning, so that's good. So, but that's fine. Yes, you can speak now. I'm sorry.
John Dashner, 733 Lexington Drive. It's a fantastic project. Really looks great. I am curious, the Hillwood Development spent a lot of time talking about lighting in parking lot. And with basically a 24/7 operation, I'm wondering if they might be able to address the lighting throughout the whole production process and see how it impacts on the folks over on Geneva East. And then secondly, that west elevation that was kind of glossed over is the important elevation, quite honestly. So I'm hoping that they might be able to amplify that west elevation throughout the whole project so that we can kind of understand how that all fits together. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Good evening. David Wallenziak, 578 Lexington Drive. I've been up here quite a few times before when other developments have tried to go in there and have been very negative about them, but I've also been positive on other developments. I see this as a plus. I have a few questions. Again, I, I think they addressed the noise issue. I'm, you know, I'm glad to see they don't have punch presses or what, being that it's a three-shift type of operation. I'm assuming that the trucks in the back, since you do have the turnabout at the end of Geneva Drive, that then goes to your internal roadway that goes to Division, there would be some signage, or is there also a gate there to keep the trucks from cutting through from these other warehouses and lineage to taking a shortcut to get to Kirk Road? That would be one of the questions. One thing that I had a question about, I was kind of surprised. Originally, I thought that they had purchased all the property all the way to the existing bike path, but there is a sliver of property there. I was wondering if there's any intentions long-term for that, or, or why that whole parcel wasn't bought up. But overall, I, I am impressed by this project. I think this is a plus. And just as I stood here before, being very negative on warehousing and very truck-intensive type of operations, I'm hoping that they can be a very good neighbor to the residents that are due west of them. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to testify? Anyone else at all? Okay. No one else? All right.
The applicant can respond.
Yeah, the applicant, you want to respond? We have just a couple of questions. Do you want to come forward to the...
Yeah, I'll come forward and I'll see if, if I can bring anybody else up.
We need to, again, Pat Costello on behalf of the applicant. I guess as to the last point, the property to the south wasn't for sale. So they only acquired the, the property that we, that's depicted there. I know there is a property to the south and then there's the bike path. It does abut a, a little path that runs towards the East Side Community Center, and that will, as Jason pointed out, will be incorporated into the project. The truck gate is intended to be, if you're looking at this drawing that we have in front of us, towards the top there, but, so the truck traffic can go in and out onto Geneva Road as was discussed, with keeping... onto Geneva Road, as was discussed, with keeping the other, um, people to the east from driving through the Bullock Campus to be able to access Division Street and access Kirk Road. The west elevations, uh, I, I know that, but part, I, I understand your question and your concern. Some of it's just not developed yet, since it's in Phase Two. Phase Four would be the other ones that would be even closer to Kirk Road, but I do think the landscaping plans depicted a pretty good-size buffer with a lot of trees on there. If I can figure out how to navigate back to that, maybe that can help. So here's what is on, this, this entire line right here is what is on, um, Kirk Road. And I think it's important to, when, when Eric showed the visual of what it'll look like from the manufacturing, so what it'll look like is green space, trees, a winding road throughout the campus that is lo- tree-lined road. So the initial visual will actually be quite pleasant and quite pleasing even from the west elevation before you actually start building buildings that will, can then be incorporated into being visual from, from Kirk Road as well. Let me see if I can get to... Right.
They mature, they have about five years maturity by the time the, the building is, is constructed.
So the, one of the other questions that came up, I think, was about the site lighting. Was that correct, sir? That was your point? Eric, do you want, is this the right exhibit to talk about that?
Uh, yes, the, the page you just scrolled from.
Okay.
Sir, you want to just come forward?
I'll let Eric talk about the...
Drive. Drive the, this part of it?
Yeah, um, so, um, again, Eric Heitman with Heitman Architects. Uh, so our, our package does include, uh, photometric, photometric studies, uh, of the site. Um, we have been working, you know, closely with the city to, um, to make sure that, um, we're meeting, um, we're, we're not, um, that the lights are not, like, spilling out onto adjacent properties, um, so we're, we're going to continue to work on, um, on, on, on that. Otherwise, I guess I'm, I'm sorry, my electrical engineer's not here tonight, but, uh, he, he be, a little bit, this is more his language, but, all right, uh... Right, yeah, so, uh, sorry, so, um, as I, I think I was alluding to is working with this, uh, city to make sure that, um, uh, we're meeting code, that our, uh, the, the site lighting is not, um, you know, spilling out onto, um, the neighboring properties, uh, so we're maintaining, um, the code-required light levels.
Thank you.
Yep.
I, I think that's all we have in response.
Okay. Anything else in commission? Nothing? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second, Evans?
Moved and seconded. Anna, call the roll.
Mead?
Mead, aye.
Evans?
Evans, aye.
Slivka?
Slivka, aye.
Matoskew?
Matoskew, aye.
Moran?
Moran, aye.
Stocking?
Stocking, aye.
Unless there's any additional discussion, it's time for a motion. Or two, or three, or four.
There's, yeah, a couple of them.
Um, the first request, uh, is for annexation, and that does not require a vote, so we'll lead into the second request. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for a zoning map amendment upon annexation from our, our rural, single-family residential to I-1 light industrial, subject to the findings of fact contained in the staff report.
Second, Evans?
Moved and seconded. Anna, please call the roll.
Mead?
Mead, aye.
Evans?
Evans, aye.
Slivka?
Slivka, aye.
Matoskew?
Matoskew, aye.
Moran?
Moran, aye.
Stocking?
Stocking, aye.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for preliminary planned unit development approval for the A.J. Antunes Corporate Campus with the following tailored development standards. A, the stormwater basin shall include native plantings, prairie grasses on the slopes of the proposed basins to resemble a wetland style and may also adhere to Section 11-10-6A2 of the Geneva zoning ordinance. B, each required parking space shall be nine feet in width and in at least 18 feet in length. C, the maximum building height shall be 55 feet and further subject to the findings of fact contained in the staff report.
Slivka, second.
Moved and seconded. Anna, the roll, please.
Mead?
Mead, aye.
Evans?
Evans, aye.
Slivka?
Slivka, aye.
Matoskew?
Matoskew, aye.
Moran?
Moran, aye.
Stocking?
Stocking, aye.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for preliminary final plat of subdivision for the corporate campus, subject to the findings of fact contained in the staff report.
Moran, second. Done, seconded. Anna, the roll, please.
Mead?
Mead, aye.
Evans?
Evans, aye.
Slivka?
Slivka, aye.
Matoskew?
Matoskew, aye.
Moran?
Moran, aye.
Stocking?
Stocking, aye.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for final planned unit development and site plan review for Phase One of the corporate campus, subject to the findings of fact contained in the staff report and further subject to the conditions on page 12 of the staff report, including, one, a final engineering for Phase One shall be approved by the city prior to issuance of building permit; two, a final landscape plan shall be approved by the city prior to issuance of a building permit; and three, a revised site lighting and photometric plan shall be approved by the city prior to the issuance of a building permit.
Matoskew, second.
Moved and seconded. Anna, the roll, please.
Mead?
Mead, aye.
Evans?
Evans, aye.
Slivka?
Slivka, aye.
Matoskew?
Matoskew, aye.
Moran?
Moran, aye.
Stocking?
Stocking, aye.
All right. Very good. Matt, what are the next steps?
Thank you.
So council date has not been determined yet.
Oh.
We're going to work with the applicant.
Okay.
We're currently working, um, with them to kind of finalize the annexation agreement.
Okay.
Yes, we know that sort of, then we will move forward to council.
We talked about that earlier.
All right, so no date set on council quite yet, but it's in process, so, okay.
Yep.
Great, thank you very much, gentlemen. Appreciate your presentation. Very nice, very well done.
Thank you very much for...
Yep. Yep. Time to get out.
Hour and 15 minutes, that's a bad for it.
It'll be longer, because I thought there'd be new residents.
Yeah.
There were very few, which means they like it, because they don't come if they like it.
Uh, yeah, we're done. Just got public comment.
I was thinking about some of my kids, like, hey.
Use your gymnasium. Yeah, I can believe it.
It's a great project.
It's just spectacular.
I'm working with a client who has a shutting down small college campus, and it would be, it should be so perfect.
Give them a little time.
It would be their dream if they could get something like this. Yeah. I'm going to show it to them, just like, hey, here's a sample of what you could do with this.
Ladies and gentlemen, if you could please, we got some, like, submitted things we have to do, so... Give you a little time.
Take it out, take it out in the rain.
Not a very nice night.
Yep. Yep. I could, I could do that. All right. Yes, please. We just got a couple more items on the agenda. I know it's nasty out there, but, you know.
They're all very...
They're very...
They should be. And it'll sail through council.
Well... I'll make it easy, so...
This is great. And these will be good-paying jobs, too. There's no place for them to live, but... We need housing.
All right, I think we can continue, so... Any public, any additional public comment for folks that are still in the room for, to the commission? Anybody want to say anything to us before we move on to our next agenda item? Got two guys I know might want to. Anything else you want to talk to the commission about in terms of public comment? Okay, I don't, guess not, so Matt, what else we got going on?
Yeah, so, uh, our next meeting, um, is going to be February 8th. Uh, we've got two applications coming before us for that meeting. Um, we have a proposed industrial, uh, site plan review, um, and, uh, annexation and zoning map amendment for the Fabian Industrial Parkway, uh, Fabian Parkway Industrial Development. And then we also have a variation over at 946 Sunset Road. Um, they are requesting in addition to the rear of their house, so both of those projects will be February 8th. Um, and then it looks like we might have another variation that could be coming before us on the next meeting on February 22nd. Um, so we may have a meeting that date, uh, still has not been confirmed, but we'll keep you posted once we hear more from that.
Okay, very good. Yeah, Matt?
I have a question. I received an, an email at work about, uh, a Senate bill that would shift some of the ability to review zoning changes more heavily towards the courts as opposed to the municipalities? I was wondering if, any thoughts on that or comments? Know anything about it?
I got that same email today.
You got it too?
I haven't looked into it much further, so I...
No, I hadn't either.
I don't want to opine yet.
Okay.
Really? So like making some code changes then, um, really? Okay. All right.
Move to adjourn.
Thanks.